I don't know if we can adjust that camera to pan out a little bit more.
Alright.
Folks in the booth, if there's a way to pan out so we can see all of the commissioners, that would be fantastic. But why don't you go ahead and share your screen, you're a presenter, so you should be able to just bring it up, pushing the screen share button.
Yep.
Can you maximize that?
How's that? See that?
Yep, and I think we can play with it, give us just a second. Our go-to webinar expert has moved on to city clerkship, so she's no longer with us.
I don't know why it's part of this.
You can, here.
Christie would still show up, just add a phone.
Yeah, just call her whenever you need.
I tried clicking on that, but I didn't see.
You can do this to increase it.
Okay.
There's another way to maximize this. Try some maybe, is it increase that?
I downloaded it on my phone, but.
Okay, I think we can see it well enough, we'll keep playing with it, see if we can get it any bigger, but go ahead, Matt.
Okay, can you see this, the PowerPoint, Bill?
We can.
Okay.
It looks like you have it in presentation mode, so we can see your next slide as well, if you want to, whatever you want to do there.
Well, let's see here.
No.
I've got it on two monitors.
What if I do, then I can't move over.
Did you do that, or did he?
I think he did.
It just went blank, or went to a white page.
He needs Christie. Go.
Okay, now we see it.
Do you still see the presentation mode, or do you see the full slide?
It's in presentation mode still.
Still?
Yeah.
What's that show taskbar thing, maybe click on that?
That's fine.
I'm sorry, guys. Need to change.
If you go back, I think there was a display settings.
On PowerPoint?
Yeah, if you go down to the bottom right, there's the slideshow, yeah, hit that one.
That's where I was.
And then up in the top left, it says display settings. Next to that, to the right.
Oh yeah, right there, sorry. There you go.
There we go.
Look at you, thanks, Bill. Alright, and the audio's okay right now?
Yep.
Alright, well, thank you commissioners for your patience, I'll go ahead and dive right in. Bill asked me to go ahead and try to walk through the whole presentation quickly, just to give you the lay of the land, the sense of the overall topics that we'll cover, and then we'll come back and talk about each one, get y'alls feedback, and also give you a sense of some of the comments we got from the committee so far. So with that, I'll go ahead and start my initial overview, trying to move quickly. Again, you know, the project team, and from Clarion, it's myself, Matt Goble, and my colleague Darcy White, she's not here tonight, it's just me on my own tonight. I've got a few slides here, just to remind you about the overall project goals. It has been a while since we've talked about this, and so a couple of these slides are older, but they're still relevant, and as a reminder, the city embarked on this project as a way to rewrite the code to implement the comprehensive plan, and also some later plans that were done, such as future 50, really to make it easier to develop what Salida wants, and to streamline the things that you'd like to see, to make development approvals more transparent, predictable, and improve user friendliness. There's a lot of ways that your current code is heavily legalistic, could use more illustrations, etc., so a lot of the focus of the project has been on this user friendliness idea. In terms of the scope and the timeline, we started a while back, it was in 2019, and as you know, we got delayed by COVID and staffing changes, but the initial idea was that we did this code assessment report back in late 2019, where we talked with a lot of you all, a lot of stakeholders in Salida, about how the code could be approved, we summarized all that in an assessment report, and then we started methodically walking through the drafting of the code in three installments, and we got through the first two of those in early stages of COVID, and now we're coming back with the third stage of that, picking back up momentum with development standards, which really affects the quality of development, and that's that third piece that we'll talk about most tonight. Then we're going to move into the final stages of consolidating all those installments and adoption, and to look more at that in detail, Bill and Catherine put together this new slide, which gives you some more detail about how I think we're going to move from the presentation of installment three, where we are in the left part of the slide, and then moving through the incremental steps of consolidating the code and folding in all the comments that we've gotten from you all, from the committee along the way, doing some public review of that consolidated code, ideally the first week in May. Again, incorporating feedback that we get on the consolidated code, again, bringing it back to you all, planning commission for review. During that May-June timeframe, staff is also going to be working on updating the zoning conversion map, which will essentially implement the new zone districts and reflect that new future land use map, the FLUM, that was adopted late last year. Again, more public review, more feedback, and then just skipping to the end, the goal will be the adoption process, a recommendation by you all in mid to late summer, July, August, and then the readings by the council in the September timeframe, and then effective date sometime shortly after that, ideally October. So, there's a lot on this slide, and Bill, do you want to elaborate on anything here before I move on?
No, I think we could get lost in the weeds a little bit about that, but basically kind of a cycle of going to the land use committee, planning commission, on work sessions, bringing it to the public, getting feedback, you know, rinse and repeat a little bit, as we whittle our way down to a final project, product, that will go in front of you all for recommendation, and then on to city council later this summer. The zoning conversion map is going to be kind of its own separate beast, though, because that has to be done in order to line up with all the districts and uses that we created through installment two especially, so that'll be a fun process.
We've got this slide repeated at the end of the presentation, so we'll have plenty of time to come back to this. But now, I wanted to finish by just going into substance, and spending the next few minutes with you, just going through the substance of installment three, and then we can go back and march through each topic individually. As a reminder, this is the assessment report that we did back in March of 2020. This is where we summarized all the feedback we heard from you all, we summarized our analysis of the code, how it could be improved, and we organized our thinking into a lot of themes, and some of the big recommendations are shown here, we have walked through all these with you so far, tonight, we're really going to focus on that last one, improving the development standards, and development standards affect the quality of development, how much parking is there, or how do you protect the river, etc., how do you lay out the site, so that's where we'll spend our time tonight. In that assessment report, we told you a lot of things we heard from stakeholders, just a few of them are on this slide as a reminder. You know, infill projects are tough, they usually have unusual site constraints, and think about considering relaxed standards to encourage and promote good infill. Need to consider walkability, access and site design for pedestrians and bikes is just as important as getting around in cars. Too many barriers to higher density projects, multifamily and mixed use, we heard about. Continue to protect historic areas, came up a lot, and need to thoroughly revisit the parking requirements, was an early comment that we captured in that assessment report. People also talked about the need to not have a one-size-fits-all code for Salida, recognize context, and think about how the downtown is different from the surrounding neighborhoods, think about how the highway corridors are different altogether from those, from the downtown and the neighborhoods, and maybe tailor standards where you can to reflect those different conditions, you know, different road widths, or different building heights allowed, things like that, so it's not a one-size-fits-all, and all this material tonight, we've tried to think about how to tailor the standards to these different, you know, types of places in Salida. Another big theme that we're trying to implement with this is the FLUM, we talked about that already, FLUM is shown on the left-hand side, and that will form the basis for that new zoning map that Bill talked about, that will be accompanying the new code during the adoption process. So, I'll now start getting into the substance. This slide shows you your current organization, current code, chapter 16 down the left, and the new organization down the right, we're going to be focusing tonight on the blue boxed articles, and we're just going to march right through, and we're really going to spend almost all of our time on four and five, because that's where the big changes are. Almost no changes to seven historic preservation or inclusionary zoning, those have been recently updated, and signs, there are some changes, but they're pretty modest, and we can talk about those pretty quickly. So, development design is where the bigger changes are. Globally, throughout this article, we've tried to do a lot of stuff to improve the organization, to consolidate things that were dispersed in your current code, added a lot of new definitions, and there's a lot of footnotes, you can see on this slide here, this graphic, there's a footnote there, there's also commentary boxes, and we've got commentary boxes throughout on the article headings and the big section headings, just to, you know, tell people how stuff is different, and where things were carried forward, where there's proposed new big policy changes, the commentary boxes are the bigger ideas, and the footnotes generally are the smaller ideas, those will all go away in the adopted draft, and so we'll probably save another 20-plus pages in the adopted draft once we strip all of that commentary and footnoting out. But they're helpful now during the adoption process, and they're very helpful for you all and for the public to just have a paper trail of what we've done. So, article 16-4 covers a lot of topics, some of these are carried forward mostly unchanged, some of them are new, so I wanted to hit in this presentation on some of the bigger changes for you. First of all, is some of the newer stuff, well, one last comment on this slide, it's organized generally, I like to say from the ground up, so first of all, we think about the environmental features that we want to protect, in this case, really, the rivers and the streams, and we start with the areas that should be protected from development as much as possible, then we get into how the site may be prepared for development through stormwater management tools or grading tools, then we start to get into the layout of an access system, a street system, and utilities, etc., thinking about how sites connect together, then we start to get into site improvements, like off-street parking and the landscaping that goes on a site, and then with site and building design, we get into standards that start to control the vertical development of the site, and then finally, we have outdoor lighting, you know, features that are attached to the site in operation, so if you're wondering how this is organized or why, that's our general thinking there. Natural resource protection is starting off with a new set of standards, we heard from you all that you wanted to have, you know, a better tool, maybe an overlay district, or better tools to protect rivers, streams, water bodies. The draft currently has a working set of standards that create a new riparian buffer, within 25 feet, and it's defined right now as the high-water mark or the top of the bank, of any of those features listed, rivers, streams, creeks, wetlands. Within that buffer, there are restrictions on buildings that can be developed, uses that can be allowed, there is an exception for small sites, and so anytime that those standards at 25 feet would create a building envelope of less than 1,000 square feet, the draft right now says you get a minimum 1,000 square feet building envelope. Floodplain is part of this, that's mostly new, mostly carried forward, I'm sorry, and then finally, stormwater management and grading are carried forward with recent updates and a few clarifications. Throughout this presentation, I wanted to give you a couple of notes from the committee, we presented this material to them about 10 days ago, they did a very quick review, which was great, and they provided some comments to us, and we haven't reviewed all the comments yet, but we wanted to give you a flavor of some of the comments. This piece, this riparian buffer, is probably where we got the most, just the most volume of comments, people wanted to see a variety of things, I think the development community felt like this was too much for Salida, we haven't had this in the past, it's not necessary. There was a lot of questions about, you know, do we exempt already plotted lots and approved subdivisions, do we have more exemptions? Do we have more exemptions? Have we really thought about the environmental benefits we're trying to achieve here? So I think in terms of the volume of comments that came in, this is probably where we and the staff will have the most work to do, to sort through those and to identify the key takeaways. Moving into the next sections, streets, utilities, et cetera. This is a place where you've got standards dispersed in a lot of places in your current code. We did a lot of consolidation here. We applied standards here beyond just subdivisions, so any redevelopment might have to comply with the standards here. In 16-460, this is a new section that is a mixture of new and existing standards, all dealing with how you get around Salida. How you ensure that there's well-thought-out circulation. How you get to the site, how you're connecting the site to adjacent developments. Maybe it's to step-out streets or to adjacent subdivisions. What's the sidewalk circulation system, et cetera? We've got a lot of notes in there about what's carried forward and what's new. We got a variety of pretty detailed, nitty-gritty comments here about some of the sidewalk and street standards from the committee. I didn't really capture any themes there yet, Bill, but I did those. This is probably the place where we got the most volume of comments after the riparian buffer. Parking is a complete rethink of the parking table. We've got a new table in there that lists your existing requirements versus the new proposed requirements. In many cases, tried to reduce the minimum requirements. But we did also introduce a new maximum requirement for non-residential, which is 125% of the minimum. There's new minimum standards for, very modest standards for bike parking. And we beefed up the parking area design standards, which we heard could use some additional teeth and clarity. Landscaping and screening and fencing, this is probably where you all have some of the more vague language in your current ordinance. And we tried to beef this up with more specific standards. We've introduced some new summary tables, like you see on the bottom right there, to carry forward what your current requirements are, for example, for trees, and then what's proposed. You can see there, for example, in the R1 district, that right now you've got 1 per 800 square feet, but it's proposed to be 1 per 650 square feet in the new code. But I think as the staff was going through these calculations and thinking about the conversion map and lot size characteristics and things like that, the intent was to essentially carry forward the current numeric tree requirement, just reflecting the new lot sizes. And we can come back and talk more about that. Site and building design. You all have large-scale commercial design guidelines now. You've got separate standards for highways 50 and 291. We consolidated those, we tried to extract the good ideas and make them more broadly applicable to all new big commercial buildings or multifamily. We provided a lot of clarity here. There are new residential adjacency standards. So if you're doing something in immediate proximity to a residential use, then you might have some height additional standards or some controls on your use to protect the residential character of that area. That's 16-4. 16-5 is subdivisions. For the most part, this is a lot of carry-forward material with a lot of footnotes on pretty specific updates. We did remove the plating process stuff, and we covered that with you all way back in installment one. And so that's going to be carried forward as part of the administration chapter in the consolidated draft. We removed a lot of the specific requirements about plat requirements and the formatting of plat and certificates and things. Those are proposed to go to a separate administrative manual, where they can be updated without having to do a full code amendment. Biggest policy change in this area to note is that the open space dedication ratio is being looked at by staff. And right now, you all are, you know, basing that on the number of residential units in a proposed subdivision. That determines how much open space is required. And the option that's being evaluated is to go to land area, total land area, as opposed to number of residential units. So we can come back and talk about that. Very quickly, the last few slides, signs. I mentioned there's mostly carried forward. We have introduced more tables, like you see here, to try to clarify where different sign standards are allowed, try to make it more easy to understand. There's a new approval process for murals, which was unclear in the past code. Generally speaking, we removed all the standards based on content. So you can't have a content-based standard under federal law. And communities throughout the country are now going through and saying, you know, if you have to read the rule, have to read the sign to know if it's regulated or not, that's a content-based standard. And instead of that, you can only regulate the time and the place and the manner of how a sign is erected. And so we did generally that legal update. And then finally, these last two articles, preservation and housing, are the same. They're pretty much the same, and they're very minor cleanup edits. But for the most part, these are intended to not change. So those are carried forward. So I think with that, Bill, do you want to maybe stop here and go back to the beginning? Or I can't see the room.
Yeah, I think that'd be good to go back. I'll just make one note, since we may not cover it too much in the sign portion. One thing that's been considered, and I was trying to find it actually in the code, maybe Catherine can help point it out, is we are proposing that creative signs, which normally come through planning commission, creative signs that are within the creative district itself, I can't remember if it was specifically the downtown zone or the creative district, which have slightly different borders, actually go through the Public Art Commission instead of coming in front of planning commission. It just seems like something that's artistic in nature might be, especially within the creative district itself, might be better suited, reviewed by that particular committee as opposed to this one. So just a side note there we can come back to. But yeah, if you want to go back to the beginning, and I'm sure this group will have a few questions, especially about some of the first ones that you went over in 16-4.
Sounds good. Is this a good place to start, 16-4 here?
I think so.
Y'all see my slide still, right? You still, you see the organization?
Yep.
Great. Comments, questions? Any, you want to just start here with natural resource projection, the riparian buffers?
I just wanted to have one quick question, because I'm not sure how the basis for, I guess I'd call it the floodplain and the criterion that we're using is the basis for establishing that. And I know FEMA publishes a map, says, you know, here's your 100-year flood area. And I've read where many states, I guess would be the right way, have adopted a more conservative standard than that because of the number of flood events that are occurring and the duration of those events and their impact, you know, from a public health and safety. So, you know, it seems to me that it's an area where fundamentally, you know, we're either going to accept that 100-year floodplain line or some alternative to that, which I've seen it listed as a 200-year floodplain line, which broadens that. And I've also seen it addressed in terms of timeline. You know, one event in 100 years versus a duration of two, one or two days of those kind of events, which also change that boundary line. And I just wanted to throw that out initially, because it's an area that I think where public safety is going to be impacted in the future based on the likelihood of these extreme weather events.
Yeah, I think that's really interesting. I'm glad you brought that up. I'd like more information on that.
Yeah, and maybe it's just research, or, you know, maybe we're okay, I'm just not sure.
Matt, do you have any experience with that specifically? Or know of other communities doing it and, you know, pitfalls and advantages of it?
Well, just to clarify, in this draft, you're right, we did not make any changes there. The floodplain ordinance that starts on page 10 of the document is almost entirely exactly what you have now. It's based on the 100-year floodplain. We do see communities starting to get more conservative about development in potential flood areas. Sometimes that means creating even larger buffers. You know, we've got a 25-foot buffer that's proposed here, but we've worked in places that have 100 or 150-foot buffers in some places based on potential flood risk. We've seen places, you know, especially in flood-prone areas, like, you know, on the East Coast in Florida or in Virginia, where they've gotten much more strict about what's allowed in the floodplain and the reinforcement of those buildings. So yeah, we've seen it out there. Not as much in Colorado. We have seen it in some places, you know, places like Manitou. I've definitely seen some flooding, Boulder, definitely. But it's honestly not been a big part of the conversation of this project to this point. We were focused elsewhere, and I think we just had instructions to carry forward floodplain. I know that the Zone A, the unmapped floodplain, y'all were thinking about making some modifications there, Bill. And we noted that in a footnote, but I don't have much else.
Yeah, there's already a little bit of conservatism built into it, because it requires that it be an additional foot above the BFE, which I don't know what that translates as far as, you know, the number of years, you know, flood. But there is that little bit of buffer in there that I'll note. I have heard of it, obviously, in some other communities as well. And it's, how would we go about doing that? I don't know, to be honest.
Right, and obviously, you want to go to a defined map that's been established. So you'd want to have a credible reference source.
Yeah, and I don't know, I'm not familiar with 200-year, you know, lines out there, that very well might exist through FEMA or whomever it is.
Yeah, and of course, in the West here, you know, we don't have the, particularly in Colorado, the flooding situation, but we do have arroyos, you know, which, you know, they're natural. They're in a location, and I didn't know how floodplains related to arroyos as well.
Are there communities in Colorado that use something different than the 100-year floodplain?
Well, I think you said that there's been some changes, like up in Boulder County.
Up in Boulder?
Yeah, and Manitou Springs, that area. I'm not immediately going to say it's 200. I just, I wasn't thinking we were going to talk about this. I didn't research that before.
That's okay, that's okay. We can, you know, we have engineers that we have on call that we may be able to reach out to, to see what they're familiar with and just kind of get a sense of, you know, what would this look like? Obviously, the drawback to it is that depending on how far out those lines go, there could be significant impacts to some of the surrounding private property and their developability, right? But we can certainly see what's out there to understand the.
I would definitely be curious, especially about Manitou, because, you know, that's our, that's our river. They're just downstream of us.
Yeah, and this would be my last comment, is I noticed that wetlands wasn't defined in here, and I think we all generally know what wetlands are, but there was a May Supreme Court decision that changed the definition of wetlands. Wetlands are, they need to be contiguous with a major body of water. If you have an area in the middle of a field, it's not a wetland anymore. So I would suggest you add the definition of wetlands, so that people are aware of that.
Yeah, that one, that one's a little tricky. If I'm not mistaken, that one's in the courts right now. We're headed to it potentially, being appealed.
Because the Supreme Court did rule in May.
Was it Supreme Court that, okay.
Yeah, they restricted the definition of wetlands.
Okay.
Yes, so it might be good to add that in the definition section or in one of the sections, to use that definition so people are aware of what it is.
Yep.
Thanks.
I was just going into the Planning for Hazards Guide that we worked on with DOLA a few years ago. And that, I haven't had a chance to research the whole thing, but that's got a lot of good best practice examples about planning for hazards, wildfire, flood, et cetera. And that's one of the first places I would go to answer that question about the 200-foot line or other alternative strategies to broaden the floodplain protections. And I can talk with you, Bill, offline about that.
Sure.
It's a website. Anything else on these topics?
Yeah, on the 1,000-square allowable ability of a 1,000-square-foot building, does that mean that somebody could build a cabin of 1,000 square feet right on the river?
I'm sorry, I can't hear the question very well. It was about the 1,000 square feet.
Go ahead, Giff, if you can restate that question.
It's, I'll quote, "The standards for river protection created a building envelope of less than 1,000 square feet. A minimum 1,000 square feet building envelope shall be allowed." So does that mean you could build a 1,000-square-foot cabin, house, whatever, right on the river?
There are some still, there are some requirements that you try to minimize the impacts. So, you know, areas that will be disturbed will be protected during construction. You have to do a site plan that provides an opportunity for staff to evaluate where that structure would be. But yeah, you would have a building envelope somewhere on that site, probably pretty close to the river. I mean, the intent, though, with the other standards is to identify the things that you don't want to happen in that buffer. So when you're in that site plan process and you have one of those exceptions, the staff and the city have some tools to help hopefully mitigate the impacts.
I would delete that exception.
I mean, if you, if you have a building there and you have a flood and the building gets swept away, I mean, you may have done all the wonderful mitigation, but what happens?
This was a place where we heard from the committee about this exception, and.
They want to go the other direction.
You can imagine, they thought it was not a big enough exception, and they thought that the typical structures built along in those areas were, had been larger traditionally, and it should be larger here. I think it's definitely a place where we need to look more to see if we can integrate some stronger protections and also maybe just add a little bit more site-specific flexibility. But part of the concern is just making sure that you're not taking away all reasonable economic use of that site. You don't want to basically have a regulatory taking where through the definition of these buffers, you've taken away all potential buildable area, and you can't do anything. And so that's the intent behind this exception. And again, we can talk about trying to strengthen the mitigation of those impacts.
I mean, if you make it much bigger, I mean, if somebody says, oh, let's make it 1,500 square feet, that's a pretty nice house. So basically, you have taken away all protection.
I agree, I think it should be deleted, like Michelle said. We're going to protect the river, we need to protect it. There's runoff from all kinds of things that could happen, floods, runoff.
I mean, I think the part of the big difference is between existing lots.
Right.
And the new subdivisions, I think new subdivisions that come in, we can anticipate this, and developers will.
Right.
So I think this comes up with existing lots that have already been plotted and subdivisions.
Like in river highlands.
And so, and I, so I think that there, I think there should be exceptions for those situations.
For existing. I mean, but it would, we would have to make sure it's not for new, right? Because not everyone has a good heart. You know, there are builders out there who would plot it like that. I think having that in there really takes the teeth out of it.
But we already have, you can't build within the floodplain. And we're saying, you know, you can't build within a 25-foot riparian buffer except for this 1,000-foot area, which has, can't be in the floodplain, but it could be in the buffer. That's kind of. That's kind of what we're saying, right?
Well, but why, then why even have it? Sounds like a virtual impossibility.
I'm just trying to understand the point. I'm not arguing.
Is that what it's saying, that you, it can't be in the floodplain?
Well, you can't, it's got to get a floodplain development permit if that's required under the second part of the section.
So you can't build in the floodplain, but you could build a 1,000-square-foot in the buffer area? That's the way it's reading right now?
That's, yes.
That's what it sounds like.
Which. Matt, do you know, do you know kind of what common practice is, you know, as far as just avoiding the potential of takings issues in that? I mean, is it, is it pretty common to see that sort of exception?
It's very common, yeah. And I, but I think we could maybe give you different flavors of that exception to look at that are a little bit more, again, site-specific. Because right here, we were trying to keep it simple with the 1,000-square-feet. But I think it would be good to have a conversation with you all's staff about looking at some particular areas where this would apply and try to get a better understanding of what some of the site-specific constraints might be. Because y'all have, I mean, some of these areas have a lot more topography than others.
Well, it sounds like it'd be a very rare situation. And it sounds like the simplest thing would be to just delete that exception because it is such a rare thing. And I feel like you're just sort of trying to appease someone's financial hurts by sacrificing, you know, environmental concerns and safety concerns. And, you know.
I don't think you can fairly eliminate the exception for already-plotted.
Already plotted.
I mean, because people have put money there, you know, with the assumption that they can do something. And you can't fairly take that away. But for something that has not been plotted, I think that's a different story.
Well, so how would that, would we save for it? Except for things plotted before such-and-such date or something like that?
Before the implementation of this ordinance.
Right. I mean, that would be a better exception, I guess.
And that would be for all of this Section B, River and Wetland Protection. Well, I think we need to go through and figure out which pieces of this would have a full exception for already-plotted subdivisions and which pieces you might still want to apply to new development. So I think it's a little bit more, we need to be a little bit more fine-grained than just applying the exemption all the way across the board for all plotted subdivisions. If that makes sense.
It does. I was wanting, hoping to talk about the part of this where you're helping people maintain their view of the river. It says that you can remove trees in order to maintain your view. And I really think that protecting the river includes protecting the trees. You know, the, any sort of tree that's overhanging the river shades the river and helps maintain the correct water temperatures. You know, there's also life cycles of insects that go from the tree into the water and feed all our gold medal trout, et cetera. And also we have the snags falling into the river. I really think that the trees are an integral part. So I would, so there's that part of it. And also, I kind of think that view maintenance is really subjective. So I think that that's kind of a can of worms thing to have in there. I, I think that people should not be allowed to take out a tree, even if it's an ugly tree. If they have waterfront, they should just find the beauty in, in that ecosystem without altering it.
You make excellent points about the environmental purposes of some of those trees, all of those trees. That's why we put the provision in requiring the selective tree board to approve those removals, you know, with the understanding that they were the bodies that could best understand if some of those proposed removals really were not going to take out some valuable resource. I hear your point, though, maybe that's just going too far.
Where, where's the, this is page nine, subsection three.
Three, A, five.
Yep.
Riparian vegetation may be selectively removed or pruned.
Yeah, I could think of maybe some situations where the tree board might actually encourage it for, say, replacement of a native species because there might be a non-native species that might be there.
I think there is a separate section for that, though, the native versus non-native. I'm just talking about the view maintenance part.
Well, and it could be that the selective removal or pruning is broadened, and we don't emphasize the view language, the view purpose, but it's more, maybe it is replacing a native, a non-native species. Or, or maybe there's a, you know, danger from a potentially dead tree or something. So that might be another way to fine-tune that statement and to minimize the view piece of it. I'm trying to remember where the view piece came in, and this was originally drafted a while back. And I'm not remembering the origin of it.
Can you find it, Giff? You have it in front of you. Is it like 5.3A?
Well, yeah, I know where the language is about views. I'm just trying to remember where that came from in the drafting process.
I don't know.
If that was an idea that came from our discussions or if that's just a part of a model from another community.
It says riparian vegetation may be selectively removed or pruned to maintain a view to the river. And I think the issue you're saying is, don't put the view to the river, take that out.
Yeah, I just.
What if you're taking it out to protect the building?
Well, that's different, right? That's a better reason to do it than.
Reasons why.
Yeah, I think you need a better reason than the view is what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying, we need better reasons here to minimize the view piece of it.
Oh, and another question I had is, you know, all of this is 25 feet from the high watermark. Is it standard to measure from the high watermark? Because I know that a lot of the river, the river, the riverfront property starts in the center of the river. Do they ever measure things from the center? Or is high watermark the more standard way to measure?
Well, excuse me, I mean, if you took it from the center of the river, your, your actual buffer is going to be reduced, right?
Well, we'd make it 50 from the center or 25 from high water. But you know what I mean, like, is that the easiest place to measure from? Is that the best place to measure from?
You're talking about the high watermark?
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I think the question on that is where, who's determining that? I mean, we have 100-year floodplain, we have 200. Who's determining where the high watermark is? I mean, there's probably an engineer's term, like top-of-bank or this or that. But obviously, top-of-bank is not necessarily high watermark down in, you know.
That's a good question. You know, it seemed like a more definitive number would be the 100-year floodline rather than the high watermark. I don't know the basis.
We got into this a little bit on page nine in the first standard on riparian buffer, where it talks about a 25-foot buffer shall be provided that extends landward of the ordinary high watermark or top-of-bank, whichever provides the greatest amount of protected area as determined by the director from any river, stream, or creek. And then if you're identifying wetlands or riparian vegetation, it's compared against the National Wetlands Inventory, GIS. So on page nine, we started to put a little more authority in the director's hands to apply that measurement. That is not on page eight, so we need to reconcile those things. Right up front on 2A, we need to reconcile that with the stuff on page nine.
Cool.
But, but the idea there was to, was to give more discretion to protect more area.
Yeah, I mean, that's a pretty common terminology because depending on the situation, you can have tops-of-bank, obviously, that are closer to the, to the water body than the high watermark. And in other situations, it can be flip-flopped, right? So the provision of the greatest buffer is actually pretty common from what I've seen out there. It gets a little bit, a little bit more nebulous, I guess, if you start taking things from the middle of the, middle of the river because rivers can change, right? South arc could potentially change. When it's not channelized, like the main stem, sometimes it moves and that.
Well, so does the high watermark, but.
Yes, it does. But I guess, I guess what I was saying that in relation to the lot lines, right? When you're trying, if you're trying to figure it out along those lines. I think this is the most common terminology, either top-of-bank or high water, whichever provides the greatest barrier. But, I mean, if there's other options, we can certainly look into it.
No, it's just a kind of a curiosity question on your part.
Yeah, I like the top of the bank included in there because if you, if you look at what's been recently built on, let's say, townhomes along the river, they're not, they're within 25 feet of the bank. So this new, our new code would prohibit that kind of construction, like the townhomes that are east of Scout Hut.
We had some discussions in committee on elevation, some sort of way to determine elevation versus horizontal versus vertical.
Yes.
But it's real, and I sketched a couple of different scenarios.
Lots of geometry.
And I couldn't figure out exactly what would happen because I think you can be 20, you know, if you're, like, those, those lots in River Ridge are, you know, there's the bank, but then there's, I mean, there's, you know, probably 50, 60 feet of elevation to the river. And what, so what, I mean, so the high watermark is here. I mean, I, I don't see a problem with where some of those houses are.
Well, as long as you have some engineers saying you're not going to fall into the river when we dig the foundation. I guess it's okay.
There's IRC, you know, like, in the building code, there's wording that I'm not sure is really enforced, but on like, you know, depth of footing to, you know, horizontal of the bank for just for stability reasons.
That's right.
But that.
But that's a structural thing, right? You would.
Yeah.
Part of the, the design of the foundation.
Yeah, and so you can, obviously, you can just make your foundation deeper, depending on the slope of the bank, right? So.
Well, yeah, and those homes don't necessarily compromise us environmentally, right? Because.
Correct.
Because they're, they're high up, there's still stuff growing on that kind of cliffy bank there.
So that, so that's, that's why I was just saying that if you're going to put bank in there, and then so somebody that's, you know, doesn't have much of a bank can be closer to the river, obviously, than somebody that has a higher bank. I think it, it sort of creates.
Oh, so you would take the top-of-bank out? Is that what you're saying?
I, well, I think that's what the, the whole, I think the whole point is this 20, like, you know, within 25 feet of high watermark, I think you either, you either pick one or the other, and I think the 25. If you're going to, I still don't even know exactly how you determine the high watermark. It's not something, I can't call my surveyor and say, show me the high watermark. Did you?
Oh, okay.
You want to come on up and?
Explain to us.
Explain.
If you know more than us, help us.
As a member of the committee and a former planning commissioner, we invite Dan Thomason.
My name is Dan, some of you I don't know yet. No, I called Sid today about that very thing. And he said, you know, the bank's all over the place. There might be a bank down here by the river. And 30 feet away, there's another 30-foot bank. So it's, it's very difficult to base measurements off the bank. The high water, the regular high watermark, he puts on our plats for us. So he determines it. And it's most often just very near the 1% or people call the 100-year flood, the 1% flood. They're very near each other or the same. And there's a little flexibility in the high watermark. He said, you know, the riverbank is gravel and, I mean, the riverbed is gravel and the field or whatever it's in is probably grass. And where those two come together is an average of watermark. So high watermark's a little higher, but it can easily be defined and staked, you know, by a surveyor. So then you have a definite point to start from.
Okay.
Thank you.
So now, how do you feel about top-of-bank now?
I understand the subjectivity there, you know, but I think that going with a definitive high watermark would be okay. Probably better, you know, for clarification purposes. And it does, I think the point that it aligns well often with that 100-year floodpoint is good as well.
My only comment would be that we have to remember we're looking at riparian areas, right? As far as protection. And to Dan's point, you may have a situation where the high water line is maybe, let's say, 10 feet set off of the, the top-of-bank. And yet, the riparian area is influenced by the river itself. So if we are, in those areas, sometimes in more steep areas, there's more shading, right, for, for trees to establish. And if we are just going to look at the high water line in some of the areas, especially along the main stem of the arc, you're going to be reducing the potential area of naturally growing riparian trees and vegetation, right? You're going to be reducing it, in that case, from a 25-foot buffer at the top-of-bank, beyond the top-of-bank, down to 15. That may be fine. I just, I just want to point out that, you know, again, we're looking at a, we're looking at a buffer area and trying to protect that naturally growing riparian vicinity, which can often extend beyond the top-of-bank, even when the water level is, is below that top-of-bank.
So you're saying leave the bank.
I'm just saying, there are going to be cases where you're, you're allowing for development in areas that would naturally be, could naturally grow riparian vegetation. I'm not saying one way or the other whether we should do that. There may be some ease here by going just with the, with the water line, the high water line. But there is a palpable significant, or, or, there is a difference.
Right, I'm kind of undecided about it now, I don't know.
Well, maybe you could just word, you know, an exception, you know, where an evaluation of the, the bank would result in decreasing the riparian area to less than 25 feet, then, you know, some exception to that would be invoked. Because that's what you're talking about, right? That kind of situation?
It's kind of drafted that way now with the discretion to choose between the two, but, but it says it should never be less than 25, regardless of which measuring point.
Leave it like it is.
Hey, yeah.
Let's leave it like it is.
There'll be more comments on it. Let's leave it the way it is then.
Yeah, it's a balance, for sure.
Anything else on this slide?
Not seeing anything.
Okay. Streets, utilities, and services, access and connectivity. We used this old photo at the bottom just because it was the best one we could find that shows kind of the grid pattern that you've got in a lot of the, the central core. But any comments on these concepts? Questions?
They're looking, they're thinking hard.
Some of the comments that we got from the committee were about street trees. This is on page 28. You know, most of the tree stuff is in the landscaping and section, but the street trees piece is on the street design in 16450D. in, uh, 16, four, 50D five. The way it's drafted, one, minimum of one tree per lot for all lots with at least 50 feet of street frontage. We got requests to revisit that. Some people thought that was too large, should be 35 feet.
Like, you know, that's one of those.
I think it's, I mean, given our new standards, that could, you know, if, even if you get down to 35 feet, you could go a long way without having a tree. Because you could have, um, you could have eight or 10, you could have a whole block of less than 35 foot lots. And you would end up without a single tree on that whole block. So I, I guess I'll, I'll reiterate the comment I made, you know, before that I think there should, you should get rid of the 50 feet or anything and just say one street tree per.
Per lot, yeah.
Thinking about that scenario, because I remember we talked about that as staff, especially with the new code allowing for slightly narrower lots. And if I wasn't, if I'm not mistaken, um, I mean, obviously it's going to be dependent upon the, uh, the landscape requirements, uh, of that particular, each of those lots. And they had the option to plant a street tree in order to satisfy their own landscaping standards, right?
That would be.
And then, I mean, this doesn't answer the question, but, uh, you know, the city owning the parkway has the option to put in the trees into the parkway at those, in those gaps. The, the issue is the irrigation, right? You need to make sure that it's got a, it's got an irrigation line to it to, to establish it and maintain it. So, um.
Well, I believe that it, it says somewhere in here that when a street tree is planted, the owner is required to. So you don't need irrigation in order to irrigate. You know, this thing called a hose and a spick, you know, I, it can, it can be, it can be done. I mean. No, you need a bucket.
Well, he's not talking.
Well, I'm saying you don't need a dedicated line. The owner is responsible and the owner can fulfill that responsibility without an irrigation system.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's directed at me, but I, I can't tell. What the code says is that trees and live cover shall be provided with an adequate means of irrigation for the types of plants installed. And that's pretty common language, but that doesn't mean you necessarily have to have a direct line just to that one tree. But I, that, that, that's back up page 55. That's in the, uh, installation and maintenance requirements that apply generally to all landscaping. Landscaping for street trees shall be required for a minimum of five years after planting. Installation of irrigation for street trees, that's on page 52.
Uh, which section is that one?
Uh, it's on, uh, it's in landscaping, two A B, I'm sorry, two B one. It's on page 52, Bill.
Oh, that's an, you know, I, I have a slightly older version. That's why I'm missing that one. So what's the second sentence of that one?
Uh, installation of irrigation for street trees shall be required for a minimum of five years after planting. That's if it's in a public right of way. But then the separate, the, the first thing I read was about, um, property owners. And this is for all landscaping, trees and live cover shall be provided with an adequate means of irrigation for the type of plants installed. That's on page 55. That's under E three.
Right. So that's, that's on private property. What you read on.
The public property is the private prior page, the prior section.
Say that again.
The, the public property is the one that I read first, the, uh, landscaping in a public right of way on page 52. Two B.
Right. And we're talking about on page 28, the, the street trees there, so of course meaning within the public right of way.
Yeah. And one thing we talked about with the committee was needing to have better cross referencing back on page 28 so that you understood how these related to the landscaping requirements and that you could satisfy your landscaping with this street tree requirement. But we need to also clarify if it's public or private.
I mean, I, I would think that if we're talking about street trees, which in, in Sleda, almost all of them are going to be within the public right of way. And so that kind of pushes you over to page 52 where it's going to say you're going to have to have that type of irrigation that's going to sustain it for five years. I mean, I would argue that's, that's not a bucket.
I think the important thing is the tree doesn't die.
Without an irrigation system. And, you know, if the homeowner is made responsible and the tree dies and it's because they didn't water it, the.
Oh, wait.
You know, the city can come along and say, hey, you gotta put a new tree here.
I'm confused. If it's in the public right of way, it's still the private person's. Okay. I, cause I thought it would be if it's in public right of way, it's a public, okay, I see.
Yeah, I like the language in here that if, you know, if the vegetation, the minimum vegetation dies, it needs to be replaced by the responsible owner. But I don't know if we have to be prescriptive on, you know, the number of years of irrigation. You know, sometimes that's a very difficult to manage yourself. If you're going to put irrigation in where you think it's going to benefit, you know, the efficient use of watering, other than that, you're not going to put it in. You're not going to run a line out there and spend that, that money.
I might, I don't know. I like trees.
Yeah, I mean, as long as there's, there's the language that allows for the replanning, I mean, it's.
Very important.
It adds a little bit of enforcement and administration. And these things tend to be pretty complaint driven. We're not walking, looking around for dead trees, but.
Cause I mean, you can have a, even irrigation system, the irrigation system can fail and you don't do anything about it. So it's.
You can forget to turn it on.
Yes. Correct. Cause you don't want to pay your water bill.
I had a question on page 37 where's, there's the picture of, uh, the corner triangles. One, the larger one is, has a tree, which appears to be in conflict with the code recommendation. So you can't have a tree on the corner the way I read it, but that picture has a tree in it.
Yeah, we got several comments on that illustration. That was just a placeholder graphic and we need to clarify, you can't do a tree there. That is a, don't do this thing.
Don't use that.
I have a question right above that. Sorry, first time speaking up today. We, it says bike circulation, design of bike lanes are required in all streets where the administrator and public works director determines traffic speeds and volumes with, like, what does that even mean?
I made a comment on that.
Could you say what page you're on?
Uh, I don't remember where that is.
What's that?
It's on my page 36.
It's paid right, uh, also page 38 if we're going by PDF pages. Oh, and it's, yeah.
37.
Right above visibility triangle, it's part five, let's see.
Bicycle circulation.
And there's a footnote about that. If you read the footnote, it's, it's a little squishy. Uh, basically we said, uh, staff is consulting with public works to determine where this would apply. Plans are already on highway 50 and will be added within the coming years to 291. So, uh, I think it was a little, I think in the first draft of this, we had, uh, been more specific about, um, arterial and collector streets. And one of the things we did in this draft is take out those terms. Right now it's, it's, we kind of recognize that you just have local streets and you've got highways in Sleda. And y'all don't use those terms, arterials and collectors. And so this is a place where we've ended up with language that, um, we're probably going to need some further definition down the road about which streets where this would actually apply. That's why it's kept vague.
And I guess my only thought is, like, you know, he's kind of right. We mostly have two kinds of streets, but I feel like there's like some in between ones and we probably want to default to making those accessible to everybody.
Yeah. You know, I think we do need to have some differentiation. You know, it seems to me we have these, I'll give an example, the West End development. We have a very, it's like maybe a hundred yard long street, which is going to have very little traffic. We build sidewalks on both sides of that street, you know? Why do we do that? I mean.
There's houses on both sides, right? There's houses on both sides.
Yeah. So what? I mean, I mean, how much traffic is on that street? Why do you need so, I mean, I'm walking down eight, you know, all the locals.
You're saying you could walk in the middle of the street.
No, you can cross over. And if you really don't want to walk in the street. I mean, and it would allow for larger yards, you know, with the same amount of density. It would have less land with an impervious little surface on it.
Well, maybe not sidewalks, but like maybe bike lanes and stuff. Cause everyone like, people like to walk on sidewalks. So you're saying like they don't need to be as wide on those.
I don't think you need a sidewalk on both sides of a very unbusy street.
I guess I, I'm like, I don't think I'm visualizing exactly which street you're talking about, but I, I would tend to disagree. I'd rather build sidewalks and I'm trying to think about this in real time. I, I guess I, I'd kind of default to the position. I'd rather have sidewalks and bike lanes if we have the opportunity to. And like, but no one wants us to build an eight lane road with two sidewalks and two bike lanes. It's not going to be used, right? Like I, I get that there's like room for judgment, but I think we're trying to encourage people to walk and bike and not drive. It's kind of like one.
Well, I, I, you know, and it's some of these really small roads, I don't think you're going to drive from one end of the road.
Well, that's why I was talking about, um, the bike lanes. Cause if you're on a bike on a small road, you just take the lane, right? But if you're on Poncha Boulevard, you like that bike lane because that's a big old, that's a. That's a arterial Poncha.
Poncha Boulevard would have nice big bike lanes and sidewalks.
But Uray, for instance, that's a small residential street next to Poncha where, I mean sidewalks would be nice, but I don't know. We don't need a bike lane on Uray.
I kind of think we're all agreeing here. We're agreeing on the concept, which is like. My only comment about this particular language is it kind of puts all the decision-making into people and if, which is fine if, if we like those people, right? If you're in agreement with them, but if we, we're trying to have a policy here, like we might consider adjusting that.
You know, I was, I was just thinking, uh, that all comes from the public works design standards for the local roads, right? There's, there is a design standard there. In the current code at least, and I think it, it's carried through to this one. There are opportunities for administrative variances that could be granted by the public works director and when they're requested. And it shows that there's good justification for it. In that particular case with West End, I totally get your point about the lack of vehicular traffic. At the same time, um, it is an extension and planned to be an extension of a, of a trail going through in, in the long run. It goes from the CR 140, uh, bike and pet path through that development. And there's actually an access, if you recall, a 10 foot access that goes north, like through that development and is planned to go north. So that may at least explain the, the need for it on the, the north side, uh, for a sidewalk. You know, just to bring people to that point, to that access point. On the south side, you, you've got a handful of units questionable whether it's that necessary. They never asked for the variance, maybe it would have been granted, who knows? But there is a process where there can be some exceptions made.
Yeah, if it's a planned development, it's a deviation.
Well, in a PD, but even, even without the PD, there, for some of these design standards, public works can make, can make the call.
Okay.
Bill, do the public works design standards specifically clarify where sidewalks are required? Not just how big they have to be and everything, but where?
What it, what it does is it shows the overall width and then it provides the minimum driveline width, the minimum parking width, sidewalk width and parkway width. So it, it's, it is shown as a diagram. So technically I guess yes, although I'd imagine there'd be, there's a little bit of flexibility within that.
But it's just the physical characteristics of that cross section. It's, it's not saying you have to have sidewalks on both sides of every street.
No.
Or does it?
I'd have to look at it more closely. I can't recall. I just see the design, the diagram in my mind, but I don't know what it says.
I, I think we're missing a piece. Cause I, I, we, we changed this to just have that cross reference to the public works design standards. And I think we need something like the bicycle circulation language. It says, you know, sidewalks are required in the design of all streets, you know, where, uh, et cetera. And I think that piece is, is, needs to be at the beginning of F.
Beginning of F on which page?
Well, it's my page 34. It's, it's the pedestrian and bicycle circulation section.
Gotcha.
We can get back to this, but I just, I think we need to tie off a loose end there.
Yep.
Y'all ready to, any, any other questions on this slide? Should we move on?
Move on.
Go for it.
Parking. Big new parking table. Sounds like y'all have different page numbers, but parking is on my page 37 in 470. Did not get a lot of comments yet, um, from the committee that I've, that I've reviewed on this. Maybe someone there.
I think you did a good job with the, uh, the, the additional changes in clarification. So I didn't have any comments on it either. About anybody else?
I think I made, I, I don't have my comment version and I can't get into it for some reason, but, um, I think I made, I know I made some comments, but you have them, so.
You're triggering a memory. We, we did have a conversation with the committee about, uh, the use of large parking, uh, large vehicles, where they can be parked on driveways and also can they be used as dwellings?
Yeah, and we, we received a comment via email from Francie, who's not able to join us this evening, but she wanted to, uh, insert that into the conversation. And it's, it's much the same of what we discussed last time as far as whether or not, um, there's temperature for adding regulations to the code for vehicles that are parked on private property. As well, as far as height and mass of those vehicles and whether there should be, uh, additional regulations.
Would you like, I, I've got her comment.
Yeah, please, please do.
Except as otherwise provided for in this section, visiting recreational vehicles may be occupied for residential or commercial use for no more than five days on private property within a 30 day period. Otherwise recreational vehicles. Otherwise, recreational vehicles shall be used for human occupancy only when permitted as a conditional use in accordance with this chapter or when located within a lawful mobile home park. Then it says recreational vehicles of all types over 26 feet long shall not be parked on public right-of-ways or private residential property for more than 30 consecutive calendar days per year, not to exceed five consecutive days. Excuse me, 30 cumulative calendar days, not to exceed five consecutive days.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah. You know, and then some of the discussions centered around, well, do you treat it like an ADU? And, you know, do you?
Like setbacks.
Is it okay to park it if you meet all the setback unit, all of the setbacks and all of the
Height.
Lot coverage and all of that stuff. But I mean, there are lots of, a fair number of examples where you've got 35, 40-foot vehicles that are parked butt up against someone else's property. And, you know, I can see that's, I wouldn't want somebody parking, you know?
Yeah, and I can understand how you could talk about it from the setback point of view as well, right? Because if, you know, if you can't build a building there, how can you park, you know, a 30-foot motorhome there?
Yeah, motorhomes catch on fire too.
Exactly. But I, I don't know what, what you've seen in other communities for RV restrictions in, on private property. Do you have any suggested language that you've seen effective other, in other locales?
I think, I liked the language that was, that was read. I think it's, it's kind of community-specific. I, I mentioned during the committee meeting that I do a lot of work in Texas. And there, there is much more tolerance for the, in many cities, much more tolerance for the RVs, for, for boat parking, for things like that onsite. A lot of times, the, you know, the families gotten bigger, they've used their garage for storage space, they need to park their vehicles outside. And we've, we've gotten a lot of pushback when we've seen regulations that try to restrict that. Sometimes in more tourist-oriented communities, maybe like in Estes, maybe, we've definitely seen more restrictions on the RVs. So it's a community conversation. I think that the way the Francine's language identified, you know, X number of days is a, is a pretty good starting point to take the, take the temperature of the public and see if that would fly. It's an enforcement challenge, you know, just like the rest of the code, this is probably going to be enforced by complaints. It's a bit of a neighbor versus neighbor thing, but that's, that's the way a lot of zoning can be sometimes in neighborhoods.
So what do you guys think about that?
I don't know, I'm still on the fence a little bit as far as being sort of HOA-y.
Yeah, kind of me too.
And, and reasonably restrictive to being, you know, obtrusive and, and.
You, that's fine if you live in an HOA. You know, the HOA could make the restrictions. But if you don't live in an HOA, then you don't have that option.
Then move to someplace with an HOA.
Yeah, it's an individual property right thing, right? You know, in some cases you have driveways that are conforming, some driveways are non-conforming to the new land use code, you know? And for people who have, you know, driveways that are large, like my driveway, I could put a 40-foot mobile home next to my neighbor. And most people wouldn't do that.
But people do.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the one thing for me is like fire safety and stuff like that. But, you know, I also don't want to.
Yeah, it's almost like a practical, practical limit. You sit here and say, well, if somebody's got a, you know, a smaller RV unit or a Sprinter van, nobody really cares, but if it's a 30, you know?
Well, you know, this, this takes that into account.
Does it?
Yeah, it says over 26 feet.
Yeah.
Has this been a problem so far?
Well, we have a housing problem in Salida. And so, you know, there's a lot of people who can't, that, that, that's where they live. They live in a mobile home, they live in an RV.
But has it been problematic in terms of getting a lot of complaints at City Hall?
I don't know.
That's a question.
About impacts from these, about, I don't know, parking or noise?
No, I mean, this is, this is unique. Came from this commissioner and some of her immediate neighbors. I don't believe that we've heard this particular complaint before.
But the problem is with the parking, it requires for almost all the development, just one off-street parking space. They have to put one of their vehicles off-street. So if they're going to put their RV in their driveway and then they've got two cars that are out on the street.
Yeah, that's true.
Because they're only required to have one off-street parking in this.
Right.
So most people just have a driveway going into their garage or don't even have a garage. So they're going to park their big.
Well, can they park their large RV on the street in front of their house?
That's worse. No, I don't think they can.
They can.
You, you can.
They can.
You just can't.
And the state has passed a law, I mean, it used to be that HOAs were allowed to restrict the on-street parking of a, of an RV.
Recreational vehicle.
The state has disallowed that. I mean, this, apparently a city can have a specific ordinance, but it has to be a city ordinance, not an HOA-specific ordinance.
Yeah.
And you know, that.
I mean, there's rules against folks living, of course, in those RVs.
Correct.
But actually storing their, or parking their RV, their boat, trailer, whatever it may be in the, in the public right-of-way. No, we don't have anything against that.
Well, then I think, I think what I'm starting to think is I like Francie's language because it's first off greater than 26 feet. And I think that's a good compromise between having a rule and not being too bossy. I don't know.
And it limits the number of days, consecutive days that it can be parked there.
Yeah, I don't have any problem putting it to the public to get some feedback.
Yeah, yeah.
On it. But that, that would, it's kind of, I think people, the people who are using that for storing, you know, storing their RV in their driveway are clearly going to have an objection to it.
Right.
If, if you could forward that language, I'm not sure if that is more updated than what she had sent to me earlier, but if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, I, if it is, I'll send it to you. It was sent, well, I'll just send it to you anyway.
Yeah, we can figure that out and I'll pass it along to Matt and, I mean, if this body is interested in having that.
This is what was sent to you on February 2nd.
I, I think it got folded into the conveyor comments. We, we put it into conveyor after we received it from Francie. I think it's there, Bill. I can't go to, I'm sharing my screen, but I'm.
Specific language was in the comments.
On a, just a straw vote, would this group be interested in inserting that language into the next draft for the public to consider?
Draft for public consideration, yes.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, looks like we got a majority to, to do that, so.
So the, the other thing is the, the issue of parking standards based on number of units versus the, what did you call it? The, the land area? So right now it's based on per unit?
That's for park and open.
No, that's for the open space. That's, that's the subdivision open space.
Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Oh, yeah, sorry, one more thing, yeah, thank you. One other thing that's come up, and I know it's, I've heard it at least from one, one counselor, is questions about parking in the downtown and parking, minimum parking requirements. There's actually some legislation right now being considered at the state level. I actually don't know if it's going to apply just to the Front Range versus statewide, but about potentially even taking away certain minimum parking requirements. I need to learn a little bit more about that. But there is, there has been some questions asked at least regarding whether or not we should reduce the amount of, reduce or eliminate minimum parking requirements in the downtown MD zone to allow for, you know, greater development. And, and as an example, the First Indy Project, which by requirement of the code, even though it's in the C2 zone, it's, it's a new development and has new square footage, new, new footprint, it requires to be parked at the same one-to-one unit level that anywhere else would have to be parked at if it was affordable, an affordable project. So, and that has limited the, you know, the architecture, the number of units and other things for that particular development, even though it is in our most intense district. So, you know, there's been some questions about whether or not it should be eliminated entirely, you know, the minimum parking requirements, whether it should be cut in half perhaps, or if there is other ways to fold in even additional incentives for the affordability. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there to see if anybody has some feelings around parking in the downtown.
Yeah, I think that's a good, a good point you raised there because if it is restricting the development and we're trying to seek higher density in certain areas, why would we impose those restrictions?
Because it's a residence.
Fan of, to make it easy, eliminating the minimum parking in, in a certain district. So perhaps the downtown, I'll call it the downtown district, but I, I don't know where that would be. You would know better where to place those boundaries.
Well, but if it's in the commercial zone, but it's a residence, then I think there should still be a parking requirement. If it's in the commercial zone and it's like a shop, then maybe not. Does that make sense?
I tend to agree, like, this is where I go back to my soapbox from the last meeting. Like, we can envision a life where someone doesn't own a car. I realize we all own cars, I own a car, I drive it. But like, I think what we're ultimately aiming for is a town that doesn't require you to have one. I get it, like, I, I kind of like the point of, like, if we're trying to encourage this development, parking makes things super expensive. It changes the whole architecture, the design and everything else. I'm not sure I have the right answer. I do like the option, Bill. You know, the fact is, at least for the next 10, 20 years, people are just going to be parking on the street then. And that, you know, maybe that's fine. But I, I think ultimately we're going to, this is a whole nother soapbox I'll get on another meeting. Like, we'll figure out a way to live in this town and you can get around to all the places you need to be without owning your own car.
And if, if we're going to start enforcing two-hour parking, you know, what, you know, is it going to be impossible to live downtown without paying a huge parking bill?
Yeah, now they're going to put parking meters.
No kiosks.
Kiosks.
Oh, whatever. How's that going to affect like the D project?
Yeah, that's an interesting angle to that, right? Not that it, my understanding is it's, it's not a done deal, it's still being evaluated, but.
It's a fight.
About parking lately?
About what?
What are you doing?
It's an issue.
Yes, there's a, there's a lot still being discussed along those lines. I will say, almost, I, I would, it hasn't yet been discussed formally, but there is certainly complete support for a downtown resident parking permit program. So that folks living downtown would have the ability to, you know, park their vehicles downtown without being cited. Now, there may be some derivations of that we don't quite know just yet. Like, there may be specific spots downtown that you have to be. You know, you can't just plop it on F Street forever, you know, or whatever it may be. And then on the enforcement side, yes, there's, there's a lot of talk about, it's been very spotty enforcement since COVID, for a variety of reasons. COVID, some Supreme Court ruling, the number of calls coming into the police department and their inability to find additional staff. There's, there's a lot of things going on there, but right now there's talk about enforcement being put back in. And then, you know, as an aside, and then, you know, it's, it's interesting because when you're talking about enforcement and just pure enforcement, you get a ticket or you hit your two-hour mark, you have no options, right? Like, you get that ticket, you pay that ticket. Whereas kiosks or whatever may allow folks an option to extend that free two-hour period, right? There are a lot of different ways to skin this cap, but we're getting a little bit off topic on it. So, but to the point, there would be abilities for downtown residents to park in the downtown area without being, without being cited. And, and my question I think would be, if we're interested in applying incentives or reductions on the minimum parking requirements, do you want to do that across the board? Or what, does it make more sense to tie to affordability? Like, we tend to tie other things.
Yeah, I would say across the board as well, it makes it easier to understand.
Is that what you said, Greg?
Across the board, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with across the board.
We'd entertain the downtown, you know, elimination of parking minimums as well, I think.
To totally eliminate?
Provide parking, it just means you're not required to.
Oh, what's it mean? I would, I don't know about, the thing about Salida is we're pretty far from a major metropolitan area. We're pretty far from Denver, we're pretty far from Colorado Springs. So, you know, even if you are, you don't need your car to go to the grocery store or something.
You need to go for a doctor's appointment?
For more long-distance things, you know? So that's why totally eliminating parking might not be something we do.
Kind of feel like I want to expand my mind, right? Like, if I'm only getting in a car to drive to Springs for the weekly errand, bi-weekly errand, maybe I don't own a car, I share one with my neighbor. I like, I'm not saying this is the thing, like, I'm just saying there are other possibilities.
The state, there's a bill in the state of Minnesota statewide to eliminate parking minimums. They've been doing it in Minneapolis and St. Paul.
The Colorado one right now is modeled off of Minnesota.
In, in county level, throw the country to eliminate parking so that it allows for denser development. That's the main reason by it. And you're not restricting mixed use, you're not, you know?
Well, can we just reduce it and not eliminate it?
That's what the draft does already. I mean, I think a lot of the proposed standards already have an across-the-board reduction.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm cool.
But not in the downtown, though, it still maintains that one-to-one, correct?
It, well, it does, yeah, but there's also, did you mention the business occupier fee, Bill, when you were talking? You, you have that ability right now in the downtown, in the MD, to pay a fee instead of paying, instead of providing your parking. So you've got an incentive structure in place already. And, you know, one other way to look at this and to increase the value of the incentive is to lower those fees or, or take that fee away altogether. But that, that fee is, is part of the equation in this downtown parking question.
Yeah, it's incredibly low right now.
Well, we did raise it.
And you said, it's only been paid like once, right?
Correct, yeah. I think it's like 3,000, one-time payment over 10 years. Yeah, I mean, it, the value of a. Yeah, I mean, it, the, the value of a parking space downtown obviously goes up the, the busier we become, and we'll need to look at that occupier fee for sure. Make sure it's keeping up with it. So, I'm kind of hearing a couple of different things here. There's some interest in eliminating the requirements. There's interest in reducing the requirements. Any other thoughts on it?
I mean, can we do it, eliminate it across the board for residences? Or, or, except not for residences or something like that?
So maintain.
Just for commercial, you mean?
Yeah.
I mean, I suppose you could, but I guess if you're gonna eliminate it for commercial, why, I mean.
I mean, the thing is, you know, for downtown, there isn't a lot more building that's gonna go on. You know, so in a way, it's sort of a moot point. You know, with the possible, I mean, with the exception of the, the arts base on D Street, you know? And that is sort of a, if we eliminate it there, you're gonna have a.
Yeah, we're probably not gonna change anything up. I mean, especially with the timing on that.
Right, right, right. But, you know, other than that, as I say, it's almost a moot point because what's gonna be built downtown? Well, other than like that development that got nixed by referendum, I mean, theoretically something could be built there. Other than that, the commercial.
There's, yeah, redevelopment. There's redevelopment potential for sure in some spots.
And, and there are some small lots downtown that aren't built on now that probably never will be if they have to provide parking because they're just not sized to both provide parking and usable square.
So that's what we're trying to eliminate.
Yeah, so.
Restrict the development of those properties based on, on parking.
Yeah.
I would think that would be the goal, right?
Correct. Yeah, and I think that, I think that would need to be done in conjunction with some kind of resident parking permit for people that live down there.
Sure.
And I, I guess I would also say, if we eliminated parking requirements, that doesn't mean that no parking will be built.
Correct.
Like, you know, I think developers.
Yeah, you're leaving it in the hands of the market. You're letting the developer decide what makes sense for his site.
Right, yeah.
They wanna, yeah. And they, they're out there. There are developments out there that have no parking. And they're experiments at this point, but they, if you, you know, if you want to try to sell property that doesn't have parking, if you sell a product that doesn't have, you know?
So as it reads, it's on, my version is page 46, but it talks about the business occupier fee for the M D zone, and it, it says that a fee in lieu of providing required onsite parking for commercial development, that says "commercial development," within the M D zone may be paid by the applicant in an amount established and periodically amended. So, so that's specific to commercial, not residential. So there's a, there's an option, basically, to not provide for commercial, I guess.
But, one of the, I guess this is 10 years ago now, but I don't know that we made, the units that were built right next to the theater.
The, uh, unique?
Yeah, the unique theater.
Yep.
To the north of it, I guess that is. There was no parking provided for those. And that was residential.
I think it actually does have the parking in the rear because there's.
Oh, no. I know somebody that lives there.
And they don't have.
She, she, she finds places other than down, other than the downtown to where she can park. So. I don't know if that was.
Like next to the shopping?
It's, it's where, who, who's.
It's right next to the sundry. The sundry that's going in.
Um, it's.
It's right, it's right next to that. It abuts that theater, and there is no parking for that.
Interesting.
That's the.
Well, I've said my parking piece.
Well, what if, what if we made it so that the fee in lieu was applicable to both commercial and residential?
That's fine with me.
Matt, you see any issues with that?
I couldn't hear that.
Oh.
I couldn't hear the response to your question. I do not see any issues with that. No, I think it, I think it's a good thing to explore. I, I think this is a place where, in the consolidated draft, we might want to bring a couple of options forward.
Sure.
I, I don't understand, I, I'm not familiar with the other things that are going on with your parking permit program downtown or the, or the potential meters and how that would potentially.
No meters, no meters.
You don't, you don't want to know.
But for purposes of this draft, I think, you know, we've got some good options we can put on the table to carry forward. For discussion.
Great. Anybody else have any parking questions? And I want to be respectful of everybody's time here, but no.
Landscaping. I, I fumbled my description of your, of your math, Bill and Catherine, but, but the point was that you were trying to be equivalent with the tree requirement under the new rules versus the current.
I think you did a good job. And, and, you know, the gist of it is that the, there's a small change to the landscaping percentage required to kind of keep in tune with the building coverage percentages in the smaller lots. So the numbers were adjusted simply to, what, ensure that we got the same number of trees, basically is what it boiled down to.
Okay.
There's the additional requirement of the shrubs or perennials. Pretty small requirement. Uh, we did get some technical comments on this from some of the committee members. I saw some comments about upgrading to, uh, uh, just the nomenclature of how we're describing minimum required trees, things like that. Nothing too substantial that I saw so far.
I had some notes here that indicated that we, we were attempting to provide fencing standards in terms of materials.
Yeah, in, in section F, 16, 480F, that's screening and fencing standards.
Yeah.
And then subsection two, that's on my page 56.
Yeah, I'm getting there.
There's not a lot on materials. There's more on materials in the screening section, like with ground mounted mechanical equipment.
Yeah, I mean.
We're talking about wall materials.
Yeah, CMU block is not allowed.
But that's for screening walls. That's not for fences.
Right.
So I, so we're not gonna be prescriptive. And other, the notes in fencing say there will be no chain link fences, no plastic or vinyl fences. Yeah, I don't think we should be providing, you know, any specific standards there. I think homeowners should be able to figure out what they want. I mean, I'm not a barbed wire guy, but. Somebody wants to put barbed wire in on their front lawn, I don't know if we can restrict that.
You're gonna go straight to razor wire.
Yeah. Maybe one solution for the deer problem.
Ah, there you go. I don't know. That, that was just something I picked up on.
Where is that chain link restriction?
It's in the, there's just notes in commentary. I don't know if it's in, in the actual code.
Oh, yeah, it's in the commentary F, right at the beginning of screening and fencing standards. Existing fencing standards are generally carried forward.
Could be supplemented, yeah. That's an old comment. That's a good catch. Um, we did not do that, or I think we, we have made proposed it in the earlier drafts, and then we took that out. So that, that's old commentary. It's a good catch.
So we're not being prescriptive into the types of fencing?
No, there is no language in here that says you have to, uh, I, I can't find anything about a material for a fence, actually.
All right. Thanks for that clarification.
I don't know about ground mounted mechanical equipment not being visible from public open space.
Yeah, I think that's difficult to enforce. I mean, you walk around and people have heat pumps wherever, and they're all on the ground.
Yeah.
You can't, cannot dictate where people are gonna put their heat pumps.
Yeah.
That's not saying you can't do it. That's just saying if it is visible, you shouldn't have a wall or fence that's taller than the stuff that you're screening. It's not saying you can't do it.
But you're saying you have to screen it.
Yeah.
Afterground mounted mechanical equipment, including but not limited to sub panels, air conditioners, kitchen hoods, vents, swimming pool equipment, pumps and heaters.
What section is that one? Sorry.
Oh, it's on page 56 on mine.
B one and two.
F one.
Try to make it not visible where, where, to the maximum extent practical. And then if it does have to be visible, you screen it with a solid wall.
It's built from.
And you don't make the wall too high.
Should be screened from view by a solid wall.
I feel like that's just super standard code stuff.
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of one of those that'll probably pop up down the road maybe once or twice and complain-driven.
Yeah.
You know, it's maybe, maybe nice to have in there, but not anything we're gonna be actively really.
Not gonna fail my, my inspection.
Any, anyone who does HVAC design knows about it.
Yeah.
I can't see y'all's faces, but I'm gonna move to the next slide.
Okay.
Um, I just.
On site building design.
I had one more thing I would just wanted to point out in the landscape, and that is, there's a few pages now of parking lot, landscape standards, buffers, and, and what it needs to be buffered from and by how much, and then the interior landscape standards. So that's a, a step up from where we are, and I just wanted to make.
Yes. Yeah, that's the, I think I mentioned back in the parking section, stronger parking area design standards. That's part of that piece. And it's not, I, it's not that uncommon, you know? If you've got 10 or more spaces, you've got to have some landscaped islands or rain gardens. You've just, you've got to design it a little bit so you're not getting a sea of uninterrupted asphalt, but you're, you're integrating some landscaping around the edges and, and pods, landscape islands.
Okay. Not seeing anything else where I think we can move on there.
I just had one comment, if I could, on, on, it's on page 69 under nuisance. It says a subdivision, you know, I mean, this is a design principle, shall be designed to maximize compatibility with land uses, limit impact, noise, da, 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 and shall not result in excessive impacts on privacy, solar access or views. Thing that caught my attention is, is the, is the solar access and the views, and to what extent we're just asking for trouble there. If somebody's having a development, it's like, will you block my view? I used to be able to see the mountain.
This, this is on my page 68. Yeah, it's in 16, 520E nuisance. That's carryforward language for your current code. And it's, uh, it's one of these, the, the prior, prior title of that was comprehensive plan. And I think we changed it to a title that we thought was more reflective of what it says.
Yeah, I think this one is, Brian, to your point, this is extremely difficult to enforce. And frankly, yeah, if used to the letter, at least in the existing code, you know, questions come up whether anything would be developable anywhere because there's constantly going to be impacts on views. Whether it's blocking, you know, above the horizontal or, or blocking to the ground or whatever it may be, it's, it's a very challenging and subjective piece of language. It's come up with a couple of developments in the past, and you're like, well.
Flower mill.
Flower mill being one of them.
Yeah.
And others. Yeah, I mean, basically, every single development has an impact of some sort on existing development.
But didn't there was, because there's some, for Salida Crossing, there was some, isn't there some specific language that deals with this?
Uh, there were some requirements as far as the setbacks of buildings over certain heights.
That's right, that's right.
That came into it. Yeah, I mean, there, we've seen one, we got some commentary about two-story development adjacent to an existing three-story development that the, you know, three-story owner said that it was having an impact on their, their views, right? Even with the existing setbacks.
First floor view.
Exactly, and that was literally the, yeah, the view out my kitchen window, right? So.
Well, should we take this out?
I don't know.
I mean, if it's, if it's.
I think this, um, maybe more appropriate for a purpose statement. When you talk about the, the way that sites are designed and the general things that you think about, but oftentimes this kind of language is more, you know, intent than standard.
Yeah, it looks like a guiding principle, which is great. You know, but if you leave it in here like now, you'd almost like you'd have to add to correlate. But in no way, you know, can, uh, you know, a view or a solar access prohibit the beneficial use of that property?
Well, yeah.
I, I think a guiding principle is the way to go there, and I think we all agree those are the right principles.
Mm-hmm.
I believe some communities really try to get away from impacts to private property and really focus more on impacts to specific public property and view sheds from iconic locations, for instance. You know, looking at something from, say, the corner of F and First or from within Riverside Park or other things along those lines. And they, they tend to limit their, the impact on views to those locations. Saying you can always come down and see S Mountain from here, you know, or whatever it may be.
We, I think we had some commentary back in, way back in the beginning, natural resource protection, but that, that piece can be a framework for adding in new types of resources in the future. And some communities do define view, view sheds or, or view planes, view corridors. And like, like Bill's saying, and like Austin, Texas is a great example of a place that has defined views of the state capital. Um, and you cannot develop within areas that infringe, infringe on those views. Closer to home, Denver has the mountain view ordinance, and from all the public parks, they've got defined vantage point spots, and you can't build in areas that would impact those, those, those views. It's, it's kind of more big city stuff. It's, it's, it's labor-intensive to define those view corridors and then to administer and enforce those, but they're not that uncommon.
Yeah, I've seen that, the view lines, and I've also seen where there's precedent on solar access. So if I have a solar panel on my roof and a development next to me wants to block that, cannot happen.
Solar access stuff is increasingly common as well.
So I think we should look at those two as perhaps an area to expand. And some recommendations there on the solar language might be helpful.
Bill, I was just looking at time. Do you want to get that subdivision metric question out on the table for comments before?
Yeah, on the open space?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll just kind of introduce it real quick. And so as you know, currently, the code requires dedication and/or fees in lieu based off of either proposed or potential density. uh, within a subdivision. And so, just to use some round numbers, um, you know, if you're, if a proposed development has a hundred units, uh, the, the calculation is point oh two acres per unit. So it's really kinda trying to determine the amount of open space off of what the proposal is, or what if there is no proposal at that time, at time of annexation or, or subdivision of a lot, that you take the maximum density, um, or existing maximum density, and you multiply that times the point oh two acres. This has created a lot of challenges, frankly, for staff as far as, um, determining what that number is gonna be and, um, and some of the negotiations around it. And, uh, a lot of communities tend to base their calculations for park dedication off of a, uh, just a straight number, a percentage of the land. Makes it very easy for the developer to know, you know, if it's twenty percent, let's just grab a number um, of the land mass that is going to be required to be dedicated, and this is generally only on larger parcels, of course, no dedication within the smaller ones, um, they know exactly what's gonna be pulled out of it. Whereas if you're, under the current code, you come up with a development plan and you end up with a, a number, say, two hundred units or whatever it may be, well, then you have to take out the four acres out of that particular development, which may mean that you can't fit your development on there, and so you have to redo your whole development, right? It's this kind of weird, uh, reiterate, reiterative process, um, that is challenging for developers and staff alike. And so we're, we're discussing right now the potential of, uh, looking at a percentage number that will try to take into account, and of course, there's flexibility within this, um, staff would have the ability to say that they don't want the entire dedication, but they'll take, um, a part of it as dedication and part of it as fee in lieu. This would allow staff to look at the potential growth into the future, because there may be a lower density development that is being proposed that would not require much dedication. Well, the reality is thirty years from now, forty years from now, that whole area could redevelop at a significantly higher density, maybe the max density even potentially. And suddenly you have a population in that area much higher than you had originally, but you have the same amount of open space. So this would allow for a little bit more planning for the future and simplifying, uh, the whole process. So that is kind of what is being talked about right now. Parks, where we've asked parks and rec to give us their recommendation on a percentage. But then we could say, this might, this is what might be required for dedication, and of course, they're also looking at where specifically those areas in town dedication would be required.
Yeah, that makes sense, to me, anyway.
Yeah. I think we should require it everywhere, because, you know, we're, for the public, the large developments are gonna have fairly large public parks. You know, if it's large enough so that you can have a playing field or something like that, you know, that's really a community-wide resource. I mean, you're, you know, if people are, gotta be playing soccer, regardless of where they live, they're gonna be playing soccer or lacrosse or whatever on that field. So, I don't think it ought to be based on some futuristic idea or even current idea of how dense that particular development is gonna be.
I, I, I see where you're, I see where you're going with that.
So you're-
I mean, you know, like Vandeville, we're gonna have a lot of open space, I mean, and I assume that open space is gonna be of use for the city, not for residents of South Ark.
Yep.
So you think that percentages are a good idea?
Yeah, I, I, I think the, the percentage of land is, is opposed to first, first, you know-
Number of units.
Multiple of number of units, cause I, I, that makes a lot of sense. I mean, you, you've got sort of like a ever-evolving equation that you're trying to, to figure out, and, um, you know, what happens if the dedicate, you know, and it would also theoretically allow contractors to game the system, they could say, I'm gonna put ten units there, and then, boom, I'm gonna, they can by right, right, put forty units there and they go and decide to do that after they've made their dedication.
Yeah, that's, it's one of the challenges. It's also challenging that we haven't really been enforcing the dedication part of things for quite some time. The city was taking fee in lieu, uh, up and, really up until fairly recently, in the last like five years.
I don't think we should take fee in lieu at all for
Open space.
For developments over a certain size. I don't know what that size should be, but at a certain point, that's gonna be land.
I agree, for what it's worth. Well, uh, we'll continue working with Parks and Rec to develop a percentage that hopefully is right-sized for that. Um, I think, I think that's gonna be a natural consequence, frankly. There's not that many lots of greater size within the city limits left that are underdeveloped. So in all likelihood, you'll see in those, most of those anyways, they'll be required for-
But if you were to annex, like, I don't know if it's in the city, the, the, the land along fifty just to south of the Forest Service building, I mean, it's a big open space there. I mean, if somebody were to develop that whole-
Yeah, that, that's actually part of the Vandeville P D, that area right there.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, it's about eight acres, yeah.
And that's, that, um, parcel actually shows part of the, the conundrum that we're in by charging per unit, because we've looked at fairly dense developments, and they end up half of the-
The open space gets bigger and bigger.
Yeah, it ends up being four acres of open space, um, versus a percent. So you, so you get punished in areas, assuming density makes sense, you know, there or where.
You get punished for density.
Yeah. And Parks and Rec has indicated that they, they don't wanna see any more parks smaller than one acre, because the pocket parks are just very inefficient to maintain.
Yep.
And, uh, challenging. But, um, okay, well, I'll pass that along, and obviously we'll, I think in the next iteration, you'll see a percentage come out of that that we can talk about.
That's our last substantive slide, Bill.
Okay. Um, does anybody else have any? Uh, one other thing, real quick, because he had it on an earlier one. We are gonna be having sort of an update slash, uh, discussion with council. I need to find out if something that council would like to have planning commission be a part of, because it's really policy-oriented versus zoning-oriented, but around inclusionary housing. We're gonna give an update as far as, you know, what's been created thus far. We're looking at some, uh, minor changes potentially to the deed restrictions themselves, um, but there may be some greater policy discussion there. I will get back to you all, um, to let you know if that's something that makes sense for planning commission to be a part of. As of right now, we have no plans for, for anything to change, but that discussion could, um, prompt some potential changes. So, with that, does anybody else have any comments specific to this, questions they wanna get out there?
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna say thank you.
For sticking with us on our discussions and stuff, absolutely.
I'm really excited. I, you know, I've been on this commission for a few years, and I've, I've been just sort of patiently waiting for, for some buffer or some river protection or something, and, and it's just kind of exciting to see it coming through, so thank you.
Thanks for your comments. It was a good discussion.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
Bye.
We'll talk soon.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Um, so just a quick reminder, uh, joint work session on the eighteenth.
Is that at five o'clock?
That is at six o'clock.
It is at six.
Yep.
What's, what's the conceptual review of?
Uh, a major subdivision in southeast portion of town, Shaken Roost is the name of it. Yeah, uh, I think it's about twelve lots.
Um, it's fourteen lots, seven duplexes.
Bill, when we go to those, like, what kinda comments are they looking for? Cause I like, sometimes we go to those and then we don't say much, but then we kinda save it for when they come to us again.
I, I think what we would like to see is, I mean, first of all, if you have questions, something just doesn't make sense. Get that out then, right? Get that out ahead, so that everybody's clear when they're actually reading the application as to what is being proposed. And secondly, yeah, if there's major concerns, they come up a little bit more often, I would say, with, you know, the, the planned developments and even annexations and everything else, where there's some negotiation pieces, then they do subdivisions per se that may be just made to the code, but, yeah, if, if you have questions and you have maybe a certain concern that you would like to have them consider, feel free to voice that.
Okay.
At any time. And, you know, if there's something that needs to be corrected, if somebody says something that's not true to the code, stat, that's staff's responsibility to try to set you right.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
Um, yeah, so March eighteenth, uh, and then possibility, I would say just put it down as a placeholder for another potential joint work session on April first.
That's a, that's Easter.
What's that?
Oh, that, that's a Monday.
Yeah, it's Monday.
Yeah.
I think that's about what I got.
And we don't have anything for the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, April twenty-fifth, we don't, we don't have anything. Oh, sorry, March twenty-fifth, yeah, thank you. March twenty-fifth, that one's canceled.
Oh, my goodness.
We don't have anything for-
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a whole bunch of other stuff coming up at council though next, so that'll be, that'll be fun. Thank you all.
Thank you.
That was a really good discussion.